One o'clock, we call the meeting to order, we'll have roll call.
Brett?
Here.
Watson? Mr. Watson?
Here.
McCain?
Here.
Wertz?
Here.
Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Russ?
Here.
Hanfelder?
Here.
Hey Russ, put your picture back on so we can say pledge of allegiance. Hey Kevin?
There you go.
Where's your flag?
He's showing it.
He's there. He's there.
I don't see him. Not mine. I'll switch over here, maybe we'll see him here. Okay, we got... I still don't see. There he is.
Take our word for it.
Oh, okay. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Any public comments?
No public comments have been submitted.
Okay. Well, we're gonna have to have a motion to adjourn to a closed session and we will be discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissive of specific employees of the public body or and/or the probable litigation. Does that cover all the questions?
Yeah, I would say and to include pending and probable or imminent litigation.
Okay. You just said it, we'll accept that. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn to close session?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Brett, take us away. Brett, are you taking us into a...
Yes.
Yeah, just a moment, I've just about got you. Oh. Gabe, thank you. All right, public, we'll be back as soon as possible. Hopefully this will be short and sweet.
Okay, are we all on the other side yet?
I'm here.
I'm here.
Alrighty.
They're up, they all look like they're here.
Okay, alrighty, meeting come daughter, need a roll call again, Sue?
Britt?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
McCain?
Here.
Wertz?
Here.
Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust?
Here.
Hanfelder?
I guess he's here.
He just didn't respond, he's muted. Okay.
Okay, we need a motion to adopt the fiscal year 21 budget.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, roll call.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay, budget approved. The omnibus agenda, the following items will be approved in one motion unless any board member wishes to have an item pulled prior to the vote. Anyone wishing to pull items from the omnibus agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to consider item H separately.
Okay, anyone else?
I would like to consider F separately.
Okay, any others? Let's have a motion to approve all items on the omnibus agenda with the exception of F and H. We need a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yeah.
Hanfelder?
Here.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to approve F and a second so we can discuss it, okay? Do we have a motion to approve F?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made in second, okay, discussion? On F, any discussion?
I was hoping that Mary Schulte could make a statement about the financials. I know they're not complete, but I think just for the benefit of anybody looking at the board book, the numbers are overwhelming and we do have 12 months worth. So maybe, Mary, if you could give us a bit of a summary about the good, the bad, and the ugly, and the undecided. We appreciate it. Maybe undecided should just be unfinalized. We are two weeks into fiscal year 21, so there's still a lot of fiscal year 20 activity taking place. We have a lot of invoices coming in, a lot of adjustments yet to be made. A lot of those adjustments, we will not make until invoice activity has stopped so that we're only making those adjustments once. We typically do our last fiscal year 21 or 20 check run in mid-August, right before the auditors arrive. So we can at that point start finalizing our adjustments. As of today, I would say the good news is, I'm confident, will be 100% confident, we will end in the black. And to me, what that means is, we are not tapping into any of our beginning fund balances. But I would expect with the numbers that I see today that we could actually grow our fund balances a little bit. When I say that, there's still, like I said, a lot of invoices out. I think the fact that COVID probably helped us a little bit in that there were not a lot of orders towards the end of the year. But there's still a lot unknowns with some of our programs and whether or not they will need some assistance from the education fund. But like I said, there's still a lot to happen, but from today's viewpoint, it's looking pretty good.
Good.
So, okay, yeah, that's fine. Anything else? Thank you for that. Oh, no problem.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, then we vote to approve F.
Britt?
Yes.
Rust? Rust?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yeah.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyman?
Yes. Now we need a motion to approve H, contracts requiring board approval. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion been made in second, okay, is there a discussion on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have, there was one contract proposed there with RW Meyer for insurance consulting. And this was insurance consulting in regards to a possible claim against our insurance company for losses due to COVID-19. And my feeling is that that's premature to really be considering that yet. First of all, from what I've read, it's kind of doubtful that we even have coverage for such a loss. And even if we were able to recover anything, it would probably be offset against what we've received from the federal government under CARES, under the CARES Act, I think. There's no estimate of what the cost might be, not even just a wild ballpark. We see there are hourly fees, but nothing of an estimate of total cost. And as a matter of fact, their hourly fees, to me, are quite high. Far in excess of what we are actually paying Robin Schwartz, as I recall.
Hi, Mary, I know that you've been working in great detail with our insurance provider and along. Is there anything you want to add to this discussion? I know it's been, it's been a very complicated road. We do, we do feel hopeful, or we wouldn't be going after any, any assistance here. I don't think we're talking about small potatoes, but to your question, Kevin, about, you know, will that be offset by CARES funding? I'm not sure I know the answer to that.
Yeah, that's, I think there's just too many questions that we don't really have answers to. It might be a good, a good worthwhile contract to enter into, but I think we can at least wait until August. We, wait, the other thing is, we don't, we really don't know, our losses are continuing. We don't know what the losses are yet.
Mary, anything you want to add to that? I know. Sure. You've been heavily involved, sorry. We've done, Lori and I have had a few conversations ourselves as to whether or not the insurance claim makes sense. We are being told that we have a claim under our property policy and also under business interruption insurance. Because we have a communicable disease coverage that some other schools do not have. I know they, the information that they have asked for goes back to 2018 on enrollment information to current. So we would continue to be, continuously be providing information to either the insurance company or to this claim assistance team. We have a $10,000 deductible. The monies that we would put towards the claim assistance applies towards the deductible. But at this point, you're right, no one can tell us what we might recover, what the CARES Act offset could be. You know, as I had indicated to someone earlier, you know, if we were only going to recover 20,000 to 30,000, I'm not sure this would be worth it because there'll be an investment of time and money. We're being told that the, the most we would pay is 10,000 because that's our deductible. But this is a new experience for, for us. We've never had a claim like this before. I guess what this means to me at this point is if we decide we do not want to do something like this, then we need to evaluate whether we want to carry that type of coverage in the future.
Why do you think, do we pay a premium for that communicable disease endorsement? Why are you, why are you saying that?
I'm, I'm, I'm sure we do, I don't know what that number is off my head, off the top of my head, but I, the challenge and the recommendation to work with this, this consultant is, you know, we're not a, we're not a business, we're, we're not a, we're not making a commodity, we're not making a product. And we're being asked to demonstrate, you know, what our losses are. And that's what's kind of being challenged, I think, and where, where we're really struggling with the insurance company to provide them the information that will help substantiate that claim.
Is there a, a deadline for, to file a claim, so after your loss? I mean, a lot of times you've got so long to file a claim after a loss. Is there any kind of deadline? And what would it be? Would it be three months, six months, a month, or immediately after the loss?
We pursued a claim from the beginning. They have asked me several times for information on our loss. We have been gathering it slowly, but I feel like if we want to file a claim, we do not have the expertise in-house to take our enrollment information, factor in the declining enrollment that may have occurred, and then factor in COVID and fight for our position. You know, in many ways, you know, this is our insurance lawyer. They will go to bat with the insurance company as to what they think our losses are. You're going to have the two opposing sides. I, I don't know what the right answer is.
These are not, I don't believe RW Myers is not, they're not.
No, they're not. I was just making a comparison to what that represents for me.
From what I read, what, from what I read of the details, they, they, as far as gathering information, you guys still have to do that, Myers isn't going to do that.
Right, and we have gathered some information, but what they will do is take a look at it, suggest ways that we could make it better, where we may be short in our documentation. You know, if we submit it to the insurance company and it's not as robust as they think it should be, you know, that's going to be a strike, it's just right there where we have this middle man. I, it won't hurt my feelings if this doesn't pass. I just felt the need to bring it forward for discussion and for consideration should we decide to go down the road with this insurance claim. We feel, we are feeling pressure to move forward from the insurance company.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Consider hiring these folks and put, maybe put, if we can put a cap, can we put a cap on the?
Yeah, also, Mary, didn't you say there's a, the deductible of $10,000 is the cap?
Yeah, that's, that's all we would be responsible for, which we're going to pay anyway if we make a claim.
Right.
Right.
So, and that's the most, so let's say for Myers submits a claim and it's, it's turned down and, and our, the maximum there, we're going to have to pay Myers is $10,000, that's, is that correct?
We would have to pay the invoices as billed, but we would be reimbursed for everything but our insurance company.
Well, by the insurance company you're talking about?
Right.
Well, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about our, our potential outlet to Myers. Let's say we, let's say Myers sends us bills and the billings add up to $50,000. Not going to be that much, let's say $50,000 and they, they submit the claims for us and the insurance company comes back and says, no, we're sorry that we're not going to pay anything on this claim. Myers isn't going to refund $40,000, are they?
No, but we've been told we would have coverage for that 40,000 because our policy allows for this type of assistance.
So even though we lose the claim, I mean, even though our claim is refused by insurance company, the insurance company is still going to give us $40,000?
That's my understanding.
I think your, your, your insurance for that claim will be paid under a different policy. It'd be paid under a liability or claims policy, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I can't, I, yeah, I can't imagine what, what coverage, what risk they would be paying for. That's, see, I think there's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm, you know, opposed to it completely, but I think there's, there's still too many questions. How, how did we, who referred us to Myers?
Our insurance broker. Okay, yeah.
Do we pursue any other options, any other companies that do similar work?
I did not, no. We haven't, we can, and we can bring this back in August for your, for reconsideration if, if we feel it's still something we want to pursue.
And but in August, we'll have a much better feel for enrollment decline, I would think.
And in the meantime, I'll ask about those kinds, you know, that kind of information, you know, if we filed a claim now, what about fall? Right.
Have you had, had a chance, I mean, I don't know how you would really know how to go about this, but are there any other community colleges that we could check with and see if they have a similar insurance policy and to see what they're doing?
I can do that. The conversation on the CFO calls of late, many schools do not have coverage and they know that right up front. They've been told by their insurance companies, there's nothing there. We're being told that there is something there for us. So I can put that out to my listserv and see if anyone else is getting that same message and what that has looked like for them.
Mary, you might check with Kaskaskia College.
Okay. Have they had a claim, Dennis?
I believe they have received a coverage determination that they're covered for pandemic and communicable disease transmissions under their policy.
Okay. Okay. I'll do that. Thank you.
Dennis, will we need to amend this motion to delay the page 128? That's, that's the contract that I, that Kevin's talking about.
You can move the table it.
Okay.
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now, right?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And, and the motion is for more than just that one contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, pages 55 through 128, so we need to amend this motion. So do we have an amendment to hold, hold the contract on page 128? Do we have a motion to that effect? Kevin, you want to make it?
I would have to go back to, I think it has to go back to Dwight and ask, and see if he would be willing to amend his motion, right?
Who made the motion, Dwight?
Dwight.
Not sure.
Dwight did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can amend it.
Okay.
We'll only need a motion to amend it and a second to it, and then vote on the amendment, and then we vote on the motion.
Okay, Mr. Hanfelder was the second.
Okay, on the amendment?
On the, I, he was the second on the first motion.
The amended motion is to approve all of the contracts with the exclusion of the RW Myers.
That's correct.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll vote on the amendment now, if you're ready. Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Now we need to vote on the, the motion.
I don't think, well, because Dwight amended his, his motion to exclude.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So we're good.
Okay, all right. Informational items. Do it different than I did.
Yeah, so the items L through P are presented in your board packet. Are there any questions related to any of the grants or sponsored contracts or the acknowledgement of contracts $5,000 and less? If not, I'd like to ask Dennis Creve, who has been leading our HLC quality initiative over the past, gosh, I don't know how many years now. But this is a very important step for us towards our future accreditation. We've received some very positive feedback from HLC. So I'd like to ask Dennis to provide a presentation based on that quality initiative tonight. Dennis?
Thank you, Lori. Hello, everyone, my name is Dennis Creve. I serve as the Director of Institutional Research and Library Services at Lewis and Clark Community College. As part of our accreditation with the Higher Learning Commission, we are required to complete successfully a quality initiative, which is really a major improvement initiative that we would take on at Lewis and Clark. These last four years in length, and they require constant monitoring from the Higher Learning Commission to monitor our progress and to assess how we're doing. So it's a very in-depth and thorough process, and again, it's a four-year process. And again, it's a four-year process. We began this in 2016. And in 2016, we submitted a proposal to the Higher Learning Commission to enter their Persistence and Completion Academy. So we thought it was a better strategy to actually join the academy and have them shepherd us through the process, which we did. So we sent a proposal in. It was accepted by their peer review team in 2016. And again, it's a four-year process. Our initial project was to look at retention, specifically tracking students on our campus at U Student Services. We're very unique that we can actually track students at Lewis and Clark who may use a tutor or an advisor or use the library. We track that and it gets pushed to a data warehouse and then we can look to see how those students do with retention and grades and other metrics. So it's a unique a unique model. They like the model. And we did very well. So really, three quarters through the process, the Higher Learning Commission suggested that we change our focus. We were doing very well and have been doing very well with retention and completion. When you look at our our data compared to our peer institutions, Lewis and Clark is is an outlier. We do very well. What we're not outlining on is with enrollments. So the Higher Learning Commission asked us to change our focus and look at enrollments. So we took that back to the campus in 2018 and suggested we need to change our institutional focus from retention to enrollment. And really today, the the Enrollment Task Force is carrying that work on and Brett's been leading that charge. So that's still front and center for Lewis and Clark. Really enrollment is where we need to be focusing on our effort. So that's continuing. In terms of accreditation and our next to-do, it's a big to-do. We'll be having HLC reviewers come to the campus in 2022 and 23. The the specific date has not been announced by Higher Learning Commission. They'll come to our campus and spend three days asking lots of questions with clipboards. And in preparation for that, we'll have to put together a self-study, which will require writers on our end to develop a comprehensive thorough review of our school based upon criterion that Higher Learning Commission requires us to answer to. So that's going to be starting very soon. And again, that's in 2022, 2023. And just to say thanks to the team, we have a team that worked with our quality initiative. Dr. Lane, Dr. Laurie Artis, Shelley Ridings, Jill Lorsback and Sarah Rankin. So this would not have happened with a team effort here. So a lot of good people got us through this, but in short, this is a a good thing for Lewis and Clark. We're still on HLC's good side and being accredited is a good thing.
Dennis, I want to congratulate you on doing a great job of leading. Thank you for accomplishing this.
Thank you very much. It's a team effort, I got to say.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. Onto discussion items then. Are we done with that?
Yeah, I think so. So just wanted to point out the construction project status reports on page 202 in your packet. There has been no change since last month on either of those projects. We're inquiring on a fairly regular basis with the Capital Development Board as to when the waterproofing project will be out for bid and the status of the design specs that have been submitted to them by our engineers for the Haskell Fan coil project, but we don't have anything new to report there, but as always, we will keep you updated. I did just want to spend a little bit of time this evening just making sure the board is aware of everything that's happening with our reopening and our plans for fall. I think most of you by now have probably seen the plans that have been rolled out. We've shared those with students. We've shared them with the board, of course, and the entire campus community. We reopened our campus earlier this month for our CTE faculty and students who were unable to complete their spring course requirements. And so I just want I asked Dr. Sue Sierwinski to provide us with a brief update on the progress of how those courses are going. Dr. Sue?
Sure. So let's start with welding. We have welding going from eight to past 4:30 every day and students are able to come in and work on all their projects that they didn't get from spring break. And it's been going very well. They're all using masks and special respirators in their own booths and so far, so good. Medical assisting is going to be done in I think two weeks. They've come in and done all their labs. They actually had two students that took ill and they were concerned about whether or not they had COVID. We just found out today they were both tested, both negative. Wonderful news. So they can get back at it. Our nursing students, our first year nursing students had skills that they needed to be checked off on and practiced and checked off on. We're going to have a handful of all days with lots of people on deck and spread out across the nursing building to get all that taken care of. Automotive has been in for this is their second week. And so those students are wrapping up their projects and and hopefully will be done in a couple of weeks. Who am I? Dental hygiene is probably the last dental assisting. We have students now in dental offices. Again, finishing up their clinicals. Our dental hygiene students are have labs that they need to finish up and they're going to be doing that. I think from the 16th through the 20th and and hopefully they'll have their spring wrapped up. We are gearing up to get the dental clinic open. That's probably the biggest feat that we have ahead of us because we're not only worrying about our students, but worrying about patients. And and of course, making sure everybody has all the right PPE in place. And so yeah, that's been a task, but we're getting there. And I think we have our nurse assisting students also finishing up their clinicals. So lots of lots of activity, lots of hard work, everybody. Maintenance. Custodial have been working all around to make sure that everybody's safe and really, it's been an enormous job to get everybody back on campus, but it's it's been well worth it.
Thank you, Sue. I just want to add, you know, in addition to reopening for those students, of course, we've also reopened a lot of our student service areas on campus this month. So we're working with our advisors recruiters, those student navigators and our media services team to really get the word out about our ability to serve students, not only in that virtual environment, but now on a on the physical campus. We're encouraging students to make appointments just to alleviate some of the traffic patterns and waiting times. But so, you know, everything has gone very smoothly with that. As you probably heard, we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we haven't had any issues regarding face mask. Everyone's being very responsible and respectful in terms of following all the guidelines that we have posted on campus. In addition, you know, special thanks to the guidance of our executive team and the reopening committee. We've developed a plan for the fall semester that's going to provide students with the greatest safety and flexibility. We will continue to offer face-to-face instruction this fall and a lot of our CTE, a lot of those areas that you just heard Dr. Sue mention, welding, automotive, dental hygiene, nursing, and we do have other areas where hands-on instruction is essential, thinking about music and art and photography. It's essential for accreditation and of course, for the learning process. So I just want to stress that. I know we've had some students who wish we had more, some students who don't want to come to campus at all, and there really isn't a right answer here. There's a lot of wrong answers. And we're really just doing everything we can to provide as many different options as possible for our students and our faculty to keep everyone safe. And Dr. Lane, is there anything you want to provide? I know we've included in the board packet and we've sent out on campus, you know, just talking about the all of those modes of education for this fall, but anything you want to add to what the plan is for the academic plan for fall? Jill?
Our goal for fall was to maximize safety while also creating a very robust virtual learning environment that made students feel like they were in a cohesive learning community. We didn't have a lot of time to do that in the spring. And our faculty really rose to challenge and did the best that they could, but now we've had all these months. And so this summer, all of our faculty are engaged in training of some kind. We have that Center for Excellence for Teaching and Learning. That group has been meeting even when they're not on contract. They've been meeting this summer. They're offering a best practices in remote teaching free class for faculty. I think we have about 20 faculty in that class. We're going to repeat that class after this eight weeks is over and start it in August again. Mary Lou Watson offers a really incredible blackboard training class. We have more faculty than ever who didn't teach using blackboard, who are taking that. We had that in June and July. The Illinois Community College Board is offering a free professional development series with all sorts of different training courses. And many of our faculty are taking advantage of those. So they really are using this time to gear up and say, I'm ready to do this remote thing and it's not going to look like what it did in the spring. It's going to look more like this. Where classes will meet synchronously when possible, that they'll get to see each other's faces. They can ask questions of the teacher. We want it to feel as close to face-to-face as possible. And the other good thing it does, even though we would all like to be back there face-to-face, right? But this preps all those faculty in the event that we have to back up. We're going to have so much already that's being done remote. And I'll tell you what, students and our advisors and our faculty seem to to understand those five modes of instruction. Jeff Coles, who does all the scheduling, has gone gone in by hand and changed the language to show that, yes, this was a face-to-face class, but now it's going to be virtual class meetings, but they are going to be Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 9:00 to 9:50 or whatever that is. So in the fall, we're going to continue with this training. I mean, we're just going to keep training. We're doing our in-service week, which is a week long of committee meetings and professional development for faculty. We're doing it virtually, which I have to give kudos to some of our administrative assistants for creating this huge calendar. And every meeting, instead of a room number, has a Zoom invite. And so that that's underway. Dr. Treska has agreed to do a welcome. And then that Tuesday morning event service is usually we bring in a speaker and do training. Where we're doing virtual breakout sessions for faculty and they're on remote teaching practices, how to use technology and some things on race and social justice, because that's kind of a big issue and concern for our faculty is now as well. Mary Lou will repeat the blackboard training again. We'll offer Center for Excellence in Teaching workshops throughout the fall semester. And the a report that faculty always do in September called Annual Performance Objectives. This time, it's just going to focus on their experience of having to switch to remote teaching, what worked, what didn't work. And then we'll share that with faculty. So that by the time we're finished with this, the silver lining is we're going to be more nimble than we ever were before for whatever the future brings us. If we go back face-to-face, and I think Dr. Treska has a lot of ideas about meeting students where we are. So we're going to have faculty skilled up in a way they never were. We're also providing the similar supports for students, making sure they have laptops. We're doing laptop loans. We have Wi-Fi hotspots in Godfrey and at Nelson, and we can potentially expand those if necessary. All of our support services are being done in a combination of virtual and face-to-face, all the things like tutoring and many things you've heard other people mention. So we've really all teamed together this summer and are making the best of what is a very kind of unfortunate situation. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jill. I did just want to mention, in addition to academics, of course, that we've we've all been talking about what's going to happen with athletics. So I did ask Dr. Sean Hill to just share a few words, just the highlights of what's been decided at both or at the conference region and national level as we go forward this fall. Dr. Hill?
Thanks, Lori. So at this moment, there's been lots of decisions going back and forth with presidents and A.D.s. And even last week, things changed, but as of Friday, the decision was made that all sports will be moved to the spring semester. Because there's concerns about COVID and concerns about some of the increasing rates. So what's been allowed, generally speaking, is teams will be allowed to have practices in the fall schedule and a limited number of scrimmages in the fall schedule, but that seasons will run in the spring semester. And so what we're looking at is, you know, seasons beginning in some cases early as January, in some cases as late as March, and then championship games happening as late as June. There are some other considerations that have been made, like we're looking at limitations and scheduling. So teams will, for the most part, be playing only in conference games with, you know, some other exceptions being made, but so there'll be smaller schedules, tighter schedules. But, you know, and all of this could change in the future, but as of now, the decision was made in consultation with conferences and consultation with A.D.s and presidents that it's just best for the safety of our students for everything to move to spring semester.
Thank you, Sean. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, you know, the other thing is institutions are being asked to make their own declarations to the NJCAA to be clear that they're willing to participate in the spring. And that's due in a couple of weeks.
I'll just say, I've been sitting in on on a lot of the the calls with the region and our conferences, MWAAC, with the presidents and there's just complete consensus on, you know, it's the safest thing to do. And I think everybody's on the same page in terms of moving forward. So Brett, is there anything you want to add in terms of fall and, you know, things that are on our radar screen? I know this is this has turned out to be longer report than I than I cares to hear, but I just want to make sure we cover all the bases.
Sure. How about if I just try commit to keeping it brief, but to keep you informed? Enrollment is always a concern. We're taking it seriously. Unfortunately, we've been really lucky to put together the Enrollment Task Course along with the staff from Enrollment and Advising and Financial Aid to really start creating some good ideas for how to approach this fall in a very, very unusual enrollment environment. Our focus is on three particular areas right now. I mean, we've been talking all all the time, but, you know, the traditional serve, the students that we tend to serve. We we sense an emerging market for course takers, people who Lewis and Clark might not be their primary institution. The think people who are going to U of I are maybe out of state, but they might find themselves stuck at home right now. And that that's a course taker for us. They they're not going to come to us for a degree, but they may come to us to take a few courses. And then that always always important high school population that we try to engage through high school partnership and other enrollment opportunities. We're going out of our way at these these opportunities through our recruit system. The the enrollment and recruitment team have been really fantastic in identifying, for instance, just a quick example of people who have indicated interest at Lewis and Clark, but they haven't taken the step to go ahead and enroll. So each our volunteers is what we call student navigators, I mentioned in our report last month, I think, to go out and call these people and find out what it would take to get them enrolled. You know, we have these people that are that are really good representatives, ambassadors of the college following up on them. Course takers, we're trying to focus some strategic social media campaigns towards people to let them know we're a low-cost local alternative. If students find themselves stuck here, can't make it back to their four-year institution, can't make it back to the other institution that they may currently be enrolled in, they have general education opportunities here at Lewis and Clark. And finally, we're trying to trying to communicate frequently with our high school partners so that once they determine what they are doing for their instructional format and what what high school partnership classes will be offered. We know there may be some emerging emerging opportunities where if high schools go into a restricted or limited schedule, we may be able to offer courses to students who suddenly have time available on their hands in a typical instruction day. So we're looking to be super responsive in those areas in particular. And just, you know, in keeping with all the other things that people have been reporting on too, we're trying to maintain the ability to offer online consulting services as well as face-to-face options for people who want to come to campus and enroll. So all of our enrollment advising and financial aid staff will have an on-campus presence during the month of August. In particular, we're going to focus on spreading out over campus so that we can handle more people face-to-face, if that's their choice. So we'll have people operating in their traditional offices. We've reserved space in Hathaway, both in the Foundation Boardroom and in the Hathaway Gallery so that we can put advisors and financial aid advisors spread out so that you can handle people in a socially distanced way and offer as many opportunities as possible. We'll continue to offer scheduled online visual, you know, Zoom meetings for advising and financially advising as well. We'll continue to offer scheduled online visual, you know, Zoom meetings for advising and financial aid advising as well. But we're just trying to get in front of these students in as many ways as possible, as many opportunities as possible for them to engage us in whatever way. We want to be where and when these students want to be. And that's just kind of some of the things we're, we're looking at doing right now.
Thank you Brett. Are there any questions from the board for any of us related to happening and our, our vision for fall so far? All right.
Yeah, I did have one thing that I, I didn't hear. I don't think I heard anything about any sort of involvement or whatever by some student representatives. I don't know if that'd be the SGA or what, but you know, they have a different perspective. Was there any effort to do that? I know it's, it would be difficult.
One thing that we did do, Kevin, is during the, during the crisis, we reached out in a, in a campus-wide survey, both to internal constituencies, employees, and we duplicated it for students to find out what were the ups and downs of the online format that we were, that we, that we find ourselves transitioned to. A lot of the improvements that everybody here is talking about tonight are a direct result of the feedback we received from those surveys. Students and, students and faculty and staff alike had the opportunity to tell us what, what works? What doesn't work? What would, what were we good at? What did we stink at? You know, they had the opportunity to push that back. And we took a lot of those results and drove them into the development of the services and the programs and the development.
I have a question for Jill. Yeah, one of the things I've heard mainly from like grade school and high school level. Well, I take that back. Even my son was going to Rala when this all came about and there seemed to be a big push to relax the standards and just say, oh, if you can't get it, you know, just do pass fail. You don't have to have a grade. And maybe that was understandable at that time, but I'm hoping that those kinds of things are gone now and that the quality of the classes are going to be higher and not less because they're online. So the students hopefully are going to be held to a high standard for what they have to do. And none of this laziness thing because that I'm afraid that became institutionalized, you know, and we felt sorry for everyone. So can you speak to that?
I'm so glad you asked that question. And I should have mentioned that in my report. But yeah, we, we could offer pass fail now based on all the guidelines, but we've chosen not to. It, it just, we're going to be teaching in a different way now. What, the, the two things that were very effective when we went to kind of the unplanned virtual teaching was to extend the time for a student to complete and incomplete, especially if it was based on technology issues. Because those are still real, even though we're doing everything we can for students. But people's internet goes out the day their final exam, you know? And so I bet since the spring semester ended, I've approved 50 grade changes where people got incompletes and finished them in a relatively short period of time. So that was effective. And then pushing back the ability to decide if you need to withdraw from a course. We, we, we found that was very effective. Again, unexpected things happen. Somebody gets sick in their household or whatever. And so I think that maintains the rigor while bringing that kind of piece of compassion to it based on the unknown. So I think that's a really good plan and, but I'm certainly open to suggestions from all of you.
I just want to make sure our standards remain high and just because we're not, they're not on campus that the class is easier.
That's why we instituted the synchronous learning so that it is just like a face-to-face class. Students are, you know, you, we hear horror stories that my kids weren't doing their homework and the teacher didn't even bother. This is not going to be that. It's going to be, oh, you weren't in class today, you're marked absent.
And Julie, just to add, for most of the, I said the health sciences and the programs that are accredited, they have not been very flexible. Their creditors are holding all the students to the requirements that were in place before. So they were a little bit flexible, let's say for dental assisting. They had to do 300 hours of, in a clinic, in a dentist office. They allowed 100 of those 300 to be virtual simulated, but the other 200, they have to be there. So yeah, dental is probably the least flexible. All the hours are all the hours regardless of what it takes to get those completed. So they're earning any wiggle room. And so there's very little bending of rigor in those programs.
Good. Thanks.
I think that's it from us.
Anything? Okay, that's the end of discussion. So we go to action items. Under T, approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities, page 206, 207. Need a motion to approve? Had a motion and a second. Was that Bob that made the second?
No. Yes.
Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Watson? McCain? Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, we need a motion to approve the amendment of Board Policy 207 Regarding Committees of the Board, page 208, 209.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
You got Chuck and I on the grounds and the facility committee?
Yes.
Do we have to mow the grass?
Yeah, you do. It's going to be a push mower, not even a self-propelled.
You gotta pull weeds.
And don't smoke the grass either.
That's legal now.
He could, it's legal.
It's legal now.
Well, that's right.
Okay, call for the vote.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
McCain? Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, at this point in time, we have four standing committees. It's a board policy committee, that's Bob Watson and Chuck Hanfelder. Board Building and Grounds Committees, Dwight and Chuck. We have Board Personnel Committee, that's Brenda Walker and Kevin Rust. And Board Finance Committee, Julie Johnson and Kevin Rust. Those are what we have right now. We may add to them or change or whatever, but thank you very much. Okay, we now need a motion on V, College Holiday Calendar Amendment, 210. For 2020. Okay, Bob made the motion, got a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Under W, we have approval of non-bargaining unit staff members for 2020 and 2021 fiscal year. We have two motions and we'll, we'll have Gabe read the motion and then somebody will claim it as their motion. What's the first one, Gabe?
Okay, so a motion coming out of executive session. The first one is to approve a 3% increase to the base salaries of any full-time staff employee who has a current salary within the boundaries of the minimum and maximum of his or her established salary grade within the existing compensation structure.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Okay, the.
Second, okay, go ahead.
Yep, the second motion is to approve a stipend in lieu of a salary increase that is equal to 3% of the current base salary of any full-time staff employee who has a current salary that exceeds the maximum of his or her established salary grade within the current existing compensation structure.
Who makes that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Hey, Bob, second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes. How will that stipend be paid? Will all, and lump sum or will it be paid out over the school year?
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. We would plan to pay that over the course of 24 pays throughout the, throughout the fiscal year.
Be paid pro rata then.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the correction and clarification. Thank you, Kevin. And Gabe? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Item X, approve employment agreement for the interim chief academic officer, page 211 through 214. Motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Motion passed. Under Y, approve employment agreements for assistant interim president, page 215, 218. I think that's Brett, isn't it?
Right.
Okay. Motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second? Okay, motion been made in second. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay. Under Z, approve employment agreement for interim president for page 219 to 222. And that's Lori. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Dwight seconded it. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Someone will make a, a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
What?
I just wanted to commend Lori and Brett and Jill for stepping up during this time of great unusual circumstances. Who would have ever predicted that all this would happen? So I just wanted to commend them for working so hard during this time. Thank you.
Amen, second, that's, indeed.
Third.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Want to stay longer, Kevin? Dwight? Okay. Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you all. Good meeting. Lot of ground covered. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night Brett.
Good night David, thanks for everything.